Excellent, this is Abby Pelton with the Wyndham School District, regular school board meeting September 19th. It is 1800 6pm and I will call the meeting to order. So we can start off with changes to the agenda. I would like to move executive session up to the beginning. I'm not sure what we'll be discussing in executive session, but that may trickle into other parts of the meeting. I'm not sure, so Bob, what are your thoughts on that?
That is your tuition request. So you can do that whenever. Yeah, I don't think there's going to be an impact on anything else on the agenda, but it's up to you where you put it.
Any, anybody else have any, Rory or Dan? Doesn't matter to me, I just didn't know what we were discussing during that, so.
Either way works for me.
Yeah, either way.
Well, then we'll leave it just the way that it is. So disregard any changes to the agenda unless anybody else has anything.
The only thing I want to say is that there's somebody on without a name on Zoom land, just as I've had too. And unless they can identify, and I would suggest we remove.
It's Tom and I, it's Tom and Eileen Widger.
All right.
Did I get that?
I did not, personally.
Tom and Eileen?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Yes, Widger, thank you.
Okay, that's Widger if you didn't hear that, Daniel. Thank you, any other changes to the agenda, anything coming up?
The only thing that is, that was.
Okay, not hearing anything?
Hold on Abby, the only thing you had asked about after we had started building the agenda was special ed update, and I was unable to get someone available to speak to that, but I think I might be able to help answer some of those questions. So if you want to put that on as new business, you can, or we can do it as part of the superintendent's report.
Let's add it into the superintendent's report since it'll be, that'll be your show there.
Sounds like Jenny, you need to mute one more person who's unmuted there.
Okay, so let's move on to public comment. Is there anyone with public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence. Any correspondents, folks would like to share?
Oh, there, there is public comment.
Oh, just kidding, sorry, who's, is that your end?
All right. I was, I have guessed two things. One, I wanted to know how Act 127 was going to affect this year's school budget and what thresholds that were pertaining to for this upcoming budgeting year, for fiscal year 25, I'm sorry, yeah, 24, 25. And I also would, wanted to know an update on the staffing of the school and the people that are in the school daily.
Recording in progress.
Okay, thank you. So as a public comment, Erin, I think those are really good questions. Some of that may be discussed in the agenda, but I think those are very important, so we can make sure we add that to make sure you get answers to that, unless Bob, you have anything you'd like to share on that? Or do you want to add it?
Well, the staff, I mean, we can, we can identify who is on staff now. We have fully staff building, I think that's one of her questions. The other question was about tax implications of new legislation. We do have Rory on the call, and we do have a section that's going to talk about some pre-budget discussion. We weren't going to get into those types of things yet, but maybe Rory would be able to help with whatever information she might have about that. So those are a couple of different ways you want to go Abby, I don't know how you want to handle those, but.
So Erin, would you be comfortable with us just kind of going through the agenda? And then if it's not answered, coming back to it before we adjourn?
Sure.
And did you have anything else?
No.
Awesome, thank you. Is there anyone else who has public comments? Okay, correspondence. Is there any correspondence received? Bob, is there any correspondence that you received?
Yes, the one for the executive session.
Okay. So let's move on to old business, the approval of the minutes from 8:1523. Excellent job, Daniel, I move to approve the minutes on 8:1523. May I get a second? Any discussion? Okay, you're hearing none, all those in favor, say aye, aye? All right, minutes are approved. Approved financial, so this is new, and I know you said Bob, Rory's on the call, maybe she can help provide some guidance on how, how this is going forward, because I believe there was a change from how it's been done in the past.
Sure, I'll jump right in there. I sent all the board members an email, as well as the treasurer, after the treasurer had emailed me as well, signing me, giving me permission to sign all of the checks, so that there didn't need to be a delivery of the accounts payable to the board meeting. We're doing it all electronically. So it was sent out to the treasurer and to all the board members to review, and as long as we get at least one signature from a board member on there, that means that it has been reviewed and can be approved, publicly approved, at your board meeting. I do see it was sent through DocHub. I think that'll work pretty well. I do see that Daniel was, I believe, on and approved or signed the warrant, and Abby, you also went on and viewed it. So, and I'm not sure if Rory did. I see that you saw the email, though.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we needed to approve prior to signing the document, so I did look at it, but I wasn't sure, like, how this all, you know, played out. So, so do we make a motion now? And then is that how it should be done? Or are we, like, I'm just trying to make sure we're consistent in future meetings and very transparent in how that will look.
Sure, yeah, I think that as long as it's been reviewed, so you know our process, we, we process the AP, and also it goes through two-step review in the office, and then it is sent to the board to look at as well. And as long as nobody has any questions on that, then it can be, it needs to be approved in a public meeting, because the auditors do look through our minutes. They look for this, to make sure that the accounts payable has been approved. So yes, you would make a motion, as long as there were no questions, to approve the AP number seven for $10,450.19.
So moved. Can I get a second?
Yeah, a second, I'm signing now.
Any discussion?
There's a hand up.
Oh, Michael P., go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, just for clarity, the process is going to involve a board review and approval prior to payment, is that correct?
Rory, you're muted.
Sorry, I was muted. The checks don't go out until the approval.
Very good, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
All right, so financial pay order number seven is approved for $10,000, what was it Rory?
$100. All right, I just muted again, okay, $10,450.19.
Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, flooring update. Bob, is that you?
Yeah, well, last time when we, the discussion of, in our special meeting, you asked to have Greg speak a little bit about the, what's under the current carpeting and the update around asbestos stuff. I know he's shared an email with the board, there's a lot of change in the board since that stuff had happened initially, so Greg is here to speak to that, if he, if you want to have him talk a little bit about that.
Excellent, thank you Greg, you've got the floor, sir.
Yeah, sure, so if you are in your, kind of your main office area there, and you look, you will see there's a slight hump in the carpet, and that is where the flooring that is, that was originally there when they did the addition of the front office and the gym, that they never removed the nine by nine underneath. And it was, it was found to be, to be asbestos-containing material. So when we talk about trying to replace carpet in classrooms, you would be looking at between $12 and $14 a square foot to remove before you even start laying anything down. It's unfortunate that folks in the past didn't, didn't jump on these types of things and take care of them then, when, when, you know, when it was substantially cheaper. So, you know, in talking about making building improvements, that's a, that's a big ticket item to have to keep kind of in the forefront of your mind as we, you know, talk about and think about improving the classrooms.
So Greg, just to clarify, so the, the entire original part of the building is, has that flooring, the two classrooms and a chunk of that front area where the original building was, has those tiles underneath the existing flooring. And with asbestos, if you don't disturb it, and it's not cracked or in any way, you know, exposed like that, then it's fine. But as soon as you uncover that carpeting to put new carpeting down, then you'd have to deal with it, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, so in general, the way it works is, is you had a one-time opportunity to remove it or encapsulate it, right, which is to cover it. Many, many schools in the state of Vermont chose to cover it, you know, to, to save the money. Unfortunately, right, you know, now 25 and 30 years later, asbestos removal has become really expensive. I mean, in one year for another district, school in our district, we had a 30% increase, where we had a quote, "one year to remove a floor", the next year it was, it was over 30% higher, just in one year. So it just gives you an idea of how out of control asbestos removal is becoming, so.
But Greg, with, with the quote that you gave, with the rough estimate for what you think it is right now, with the square foot, do you know the square footage? Were you able to give a rough?
They're about 1,000 square feet a room. So yeah, you'd be talking between 12 and, 10, 10 and 12,000 per room. I mean, I know at New Brook this year, the rooms were like, a little under 900 square feet, and we spent $24,200 to remove two classrooms there. And that didn't include the like, 2,700 of the work plan and the post-remediation testing. Yeah, we ended up in those classrooms at, I think it was, it was like, $27 or $28 a square foot by the time we removed and laid back down, which is just an absurd number, but it is what it is, you know, it's not in our control.
We got a hand up, so let me know when it's a good time.
Go ahead, Crystal.
Asbestos, do you guys want to touch base on that, please?
What are you asking, Crystal?
Like, has the building been tested, is there a problem?
Yeah, no, the building's been tested and it's regularly checked, and it has to be inspected on a regular basis, and that's what Greg's saying. That work, that's been done as a binder of that work, at least recently, it's pretty up to date. What he's saying is that we had talked about replacing the carpeting in the classrooms at the end of the summer, and we pumped the brakes on that because of Greg's information that we would have to actually do the asbestos removal first in order to do that. So not only was the cost of the carpet going to be outside of what the budget currently had, but the cost of the asbestos removal would also be. That sounds like I'm hearing him say that you're probably talking, well, I think, I think the carpeting was around 10 or so, and now, and then the new carpeting, that doesn't include installation, and the asbestos removal, you're talking probably another $25,000 to $30,000. So the whole project is probably in the neighborhood of 40 to 45 by the time you're done with removal and the new flooring put in.
But eventually, it's going to have to be done, correct?
Yeah, we were just reporting out on what, what, what had to be done and what the cost, rough cost would be, that's what, that's what his update was today. Yeah, there was no, there was no mystery that asbestos was there. That's been known by the board, or a board, not this current board, but boards here and administrators here for years. And like, like Greg said, the decision was made to put, to leave the carpeting on it 20 something years ago, and that's the way it's been ever since, which as he said, is not unusual, but.
Yeah, and the, the, the trigger to this was when we did the gym floor. So when we did the multipurpose room floor, we had to have that tested for asbestos before we could have it removed. However, when you pay to have asbestos testing done, they just charge you like a flat rate. You know, it's, it's X amount to come down and do the testing. So, and then, and then they give you X number of tests with that. So we had, they give you like 20 tests when they come. And so we only needed six of them in there. So while we were there, I said, well, let's test these classrooms, so if we get to a point where we start replacing, you know, classrooms and floors, we have that knowledge, and that was when we both picked up on kind of that little hump, you know, right in the center there, and we're like, oh gosh, no way, you know, like, I'll bet you. And sure enough, when we peeled the carpet back, there was VCT under it, and it tested positive. That was kind of the backstory to it.
Thank you.
It happened documented before that, though, too, right?
I am pretty sure if you look through some of the old building plans there, they reference it there, because there's actually a reference in there at about 50 cents a square foot to remove in 88, like 94 or something.
Yeah, it's been documented for many years.
Yeah, yeah, because I remember seeing it and being like, oh, cut it out, 50 cents. Well, that, that's gone up.
So then we're in this catchme too, because, I mean, the, the flooring in an elementary school is so integral in what we do all day long. I'm on the floor all day, and the kids are on the floor all day. And so it'd be really, and the flooring we have is, we're lucky to have had the board donate, or bring the rugs the day before school started, which is awesome, and we're using them. They're not, they're not commercial, so this is like a great temporary solution. But I think obviously we need a long-term solution, because the rug that's underneath it and the flooring is just really not functional. It's, and it's really, you can clean it, you can deep clean it, but it's never, it's not going to get there to a point where you would want kids sitting on it. And so then we're in that catchme too, of how do we work, how do we get flooring without, and then, you know, navigate the asbestos situation. But we definitely need some solution for sitting on the floor, which we do all day long.
I'm sorry.
How's your budget?
There's, yep.
So the reason Greg was reporting out was so that we could have that information as, as we have a pre-budget discussion on the agenda tonight to kind of just talk these things through. So unless Abby has more questions, she's, she's the one I want to hear from Greg, so we, that was what his report was, just to share what, what exists, what the cost would be to remove it, and any other questions for Greg around that?
There's a hand up in the room and a hand up online.
So let's go to the hand in the room, and then we'll go to the hand online.
Why are you on the floor all day, why aren't they sitting at their desk? Oh, so we sit on the floor because it's a really engaging practice. It's a, it's really best practices, the kids meet, meeting, meeting, then they go to their tables, and we model something, and then they come back and work in groups collaboratively, and it's very much best practices, it's not that we're, and I'm on the floor with them, Marco's on the floor with them, it's, and you go to any other elementary school, you'll see kids on the floor all day long, you want to see that. I've seen it in preschool. Yeah, no, definitely K to 5, you would see kids on the floor, kids going back and forth, navigating between groups on the tables and groups on the floor, groups around the room. But it's definitely a best practice, so, yeah.
Okay, Michael P.?
I'm wondering if it would be probably, I mean, given we're coming up on budget season and the school's going to have to figure out how to navigate a flooring issue, if it makes sense for a couple of different options to be looked at in terms of what type of flooring could be put down, what's the most cost-effective? And trying to think about that as a project that happens over, I mean, budgeting for the project, let's say, over a year or two. And if there's like some sort of stopgap that we can do to make do in the meantime. I know we purchased some, some throws to put down over the carpet so that the school can open and function, but maybe in the short term, we can come up with, maybe next year, the board budgets, you know, let's say, a thousand bucks to put down some really large throws that cover more of the floor, and then the following year, there's an actual remediation that happens during the summer and install of, you know, whatever it is, vinyl plank, or carpet, or whatever the thing is that the board settles on. But I think it'd be wise to look at a couple of different options. I know carpet is sort of a go-to, but it's really challenging to clean, and I think there are much better solutions out there. And to be perfectly honest, I'm not a huge fan of all the glues and whatnot that literally PTO squares have to offer, so, I don't know, it's just something.
Who was in, yeah, I think, Michael?
I think you're muted. Greg can talk a little bit about the flooring that's used in some of the other elementary schools, if you want to hear a little bit about that. And then maybe when we talk about the budgeting piece, Laurie can talk a little bit about capital planning as well, and think about the building from a short and a long-term perspective.
Yeah, generally in the classrooms, we've been using a Forbow Flotex product. It's a, it's a, it's a straight green carpet, it's not your typical loop carpet. So stains and messes and whatnot tend to come out of it really easily. And whereas loop carpet, which is what you currently have, the loops tend to hold dirt in. And so then that tends to, you know, hold it longer and longer, and so it just gets dirtier. So we have gone to that, we've had great success with it. It is in both pre-k's at Townsend Elementary, and this summer being its first full year there, they literally got every single stain out of that carpet this summer. They ran a carpet extractor over it two times. I'm not sure how long it's been since it's been a carpet extractor entered into that building in general. So it, any flooring requires some care, whether it is VCT that needs to be stripped and refinished, wood gym floors that need finishing every couple of years. Commercial flooring just requires a lot more care in general than residential flooring. So I would, I would stand by that product, having used it in five or six different schools and seeing really great results. Bob, I mean, you, you saw the work, some of the stuff that went down at Leland and Gray, again, it has held up really well there. So we, yeah, we've used it all over the district with, with really great success. There is a glue that glues it down, I would say in two days max, it's generally gone. This year, we actually had it going down in a, in a room in New Brook, and we had a, a staff member, because it was during new teacher induction, actually have a reaction. The guys closed the doors, set up fans in the windows, and they had no issue the rest of the day. So it wasn't, it wasn't super bad, you know, and, and then by the end of new teacher induction, the floors were already down, and she wasn't having an issue anymore. So it's a, I don't know that I would say it's a green product, I mean, it's a glue, but it is not as bad as some of the products that are out there that we use, you know, for gluing floors down, so.
Greg, what was the name of the product?
Forbow, it's for, it's made by Forbow, and it's their Flotex carpet tile. And you can get it in sheet good, you can get it in 20 by 20s, you can get it in plank, you can get it to look like wood, you can, I mean, there's some really great options. I, I mean, as a board, if you're interested, I'd happily send you some of the pictures of some of the others, classrooms even, that we've done in the school. They really have come out great.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Greg. So just for folks and parents to be clear, because I know as Crystal had kind of mentioned, it was a bit of a surprise, it was a bit of a surprise for myself as well. So I am looking into that, I've been in communications with Greg and with Bob, and will continue to make sure that, you know, everything remains safe. And we are, will be very proactively working on plans to address this and figure this out. So the donation came from the Pelton for those, and that's when we found out and didn't know, you know, as a parent, I have no idea, it's deemed safe, but that's not safe enough for me. So that was just something to allow space with a little extra buffer. But that is, this will be ongoing, this is not going to just not be discussed, it's going to be a continuous project until it is removed completely from the school. And I think that that's pretty much, I would imagine, shared with the other board members as well. So, but as we're all learning and getting kind of brought up to speed on things, that will be also communicated to families and community members as well. So is there any further discussion on the floor? All right, not hearing anything, we'll move on to new business. Principals report, Bob, you're on.
Well, I'm not your principal, so I'm going to hand it over to Jenna.
Jenna, you're on.
All right, I will just, I just have a few updates because, let me open it up so I can read it while we're talking. I have too many windows open, the kids tell me all day long. You've got to close your windows. Let's see. Oh, here we go. All right, so just a few things, so under the category of academic proficiency, so we've kind of, we've been operating in three categories, academic proficiency, high-quality staffing, and then safe and healthy schools. So under academic proficiency, I'd say the first thing, bullet that's not actually on there is we have been really solidifying routines, and I didn't write it just because it sounds like a, like, it doesn't sound as interesting as it is, but it's been really going well. And it took us a little while to learn each other, and for Marco and I to know the kids, and, and then they had to learn this new idea of switching classrooms for math and science, and then switching for reading and writing and social studies. That all seems like natural old hat now, and so that was a huge part of academic proficiency in the beginning. And our specials have really just started kicking in, so our special classes, which are art, PE, music, and those are just being finalized now, and the schedule's in place, so that's been fantastic. The, it's kind of, it was great for the kids who have been here before, which is most of them, to see a familiar face, since everybody else is unfamiliar, and they love the programming, and so that's great. I would say that one thing for future reference is that there's not enough specials. So specials are meant for students to have enrichment and have these, you know, have these experiences, and they're for students, but they also help teachers to plan and to have meeting time, and so that we can have, excuse me, data meetings, and that we can have common planning time together, and we can just have planning time. And so the amount of time that we do have is less than what would typically be recommended. I would say for Marco, who's the first-year teacher, he's been doing fantastic, and we're so lucky to have him on board, and like, but I would say it would be really important to find, and I, and I have to say, Bob and I have been putting our heads together on this too and thinking of ways to get a more planning time, but with such a small building, it's really hard to get the planning time for everybody that I would generally think, which is research-based, about 45 minutes a day for planning. So we don't have that for, for each day, so that's something to think about for the future. But we're starting to really get our groove on. really get our groove on. The kids know who we are. We know who they are, every student now, and that's been great. Um, we have a curriculum breakfast coming up on September twenty-seventh from eight-thirty to nine-thirty where we'll talk about the scope and sequence of what we are teaching in the lower grades, which we call the COPS, and the upper grades, which are the Eagles. And so we'll share the scope and sequence for math and science for the whole school, K to five, and I'll share the reading and writing. And so that's just something to know about. High-quality staffing, we are fully staffed and that's amazing. And we're really lucky to have everybody on board. So we just hired about a week and a half ago, Ms. Glory, who's our part-time administrative assistant. And she just jumped in quite literally, uh, in the middle of a school day, um, after she was cleared and corried and ready to go. She just came in and just picked up like she worked here before. And she is just moving and grooving and the kids know she is and that's been great. So the three of us kind of make up the school now and it's starting to feel that way. It's starting to feel like we're gelling and we know what we're doing. Um, safe and healthy schools, we spent a lot of time emptying the building and trying to get it as clean as possible. And it's better, I think. It looks better. We're trying. Um, it definitely was not doable to even think straight with all the stuff that was here before. So yeah, so we're working on it still. It's not perfect, but we did a lot of work around that. So that's good. And I mentioned the rug and the flooring and so that's that. And we have a few assessments coming up. Um, one is the Ames Web Math and Reading uh, assessment system that is required in our union for all students. And, uh, and it's been a little funky and it's been going in and out. So we're working on that. Uh, but that will help Marco and I to be able to share with you the scope and sequence for the year. And then panorama is, um, something I'm really interested in seeing. We have free five. Um, I'm really interested in seeing this data because it's surveys about social, emotional learning and the culture of the school and learning culture. And so what we're noticing is that while we have few students, the culture that we want to grow is really about being engaged, engaged, being cooperative and learning from each other. And that's a huge shift. Um, so even the idea that we don't have desks in the classroom is something I probably didn't think through enough to even talk with students about. Because it's more of a shift in the way that we use cooperative engaging practices. And we just thought, oh, students will jump and start working in groups. But then they started thinking, well, where, where's my, my spot? And it was just, it just sort of reminded me that we're changing, there's a lot change of change happening and there's this social, emotional, cultural piece to it that we want to be really mindful of and that we need to grow as well. So those are the two big assessments coming up. And I think that's kind of in a nutshell what we have going on.
Thank you, Jenna. Um, could you speak to counseling at all as far as how, has that kicked off as well? And
Yeah.
Um, do we, is there communication of a need for more or how is that?
Yeah, so I, I think definitely we could use more for sure, but Elizabeth is here, um, four hours a week. She started with, um, doing a lot of observation and then talking to Marco and myself about some things we can put in place. And now she's starting to pick up individual students and, and, um, looking at potential groups, like lunch bunch groups. She can't do any more time, whether we could pay her, I think, triple. I don't think there's a way to get her to do it. And we were looking at looking, uh, using Zoom to have some other therapy supports for students. And I think I, it makes sense to let Elizabeth sort of get in place now and see how that goes, especially since it, you know, we're zooming for some other services and we haven't seen how that actually plays out yet. Um, sometimes we're realizing space, even though it's, there are only fifteen students total. You know, the space when you start doing one-on-one services and zooming, that's sort of, it's like, so all of, there are factors that are popping up as we're doing it that we couldn't have anticipated or we didn't. And I feel like the same thing with therapy. And we haven't seen that therapeutic supports really play out yet to see what we might need in addition. So I would take a wait and see unless it were, you know, Elizabeth could say I can come in for eight hours, we'd take it for sure. But she can't. So it would be some kind of alternative. And at this point, I'd rather see how it plays out a little. If that makes sense.
It does. Thank you, Jenna.
Question.
Okay.
Yep. Um, you just said you were zooming for other services. What are those other services that you're zooming for?
There, um, the district has, like, speech and language services are being, um, sometimes outsourced through um, partial, like a hybrid model. So that's one example. And some specialized services, depending on the IP and the services that are required. If you have a child, you, if this isn't a surprise, we're not dropping it anybody. It would be part of a conversation in your IP. So everyone's well aware.
Yeah, but okay, so it's not other services that are offered to every child in the school. There's specialized services for an IEP or a five oh four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so Bob, superintendent, there you go.
Yep.
Now you're up.
So I think the board members got my report. Uh, I'll be a little bit late, um, today, but, um, just so you guys are all pretty new and I'm new. So just to kind of walk you through a little bit of what it looks like. So uh, Jenna described the categories that we utilize in our reporting, and that's based on the categories of EQS, which is the education quality standards from Vermont. And so what we do is I have a little introductory thing about the opening of school for September. I do this each month uh, with a new intro. And then, um, uh, Lori's office, uh, Jen McHusick and Curriculum, um, Special Education with Stephanie and Michelle Harchie. Uh, they will each, um, put in, as, as will Greg, um, in facilities in, into those areas where, um, information about their areas are relevant. So you can see the bullets that are listed in that report under, and some of them are written by special ed, some from the finance office and some from, um, Greg. At the end of the report, um, and some from Jen, I'm sorry. At the end of the report, uh, there's a little, there's a shorter snippet of updates from, um, the new IT director, Matt Martin. Um, and also, uh, from the equity coordinator, Lindsay Turgeon Brown, who, uh, is new this year, a new position for the SU. All of these people are SU employees. And so these are updates that are global in information. They're not specific to your building or to your district. Um, but certainly they can have implications for the work that you guys are doing. So, um, that's, I just wanted to, that's the overview of what the report looks like and how it's structured. Um, it's the report that Bill Anton had used previously with the boards. And, um, when I went around, when I first got hired, particularly with the supervisor reunion board, um, they wanted me to keep the same structure. So that's where we're at. Um, and that's what that report is. But in short, I'll just say that, um, the schools all opened. It's been a, uh, fantastic opportunity for me to, to start to settle in a little bit into the job, um, after fairly hectic summer. Um, not, not that Wyndham had anything to do with that, I promise you. But, uh, so yeah, a lot going on in Wyndham. And then so, but as there are other schools opened and, uh, there's a lot of other new principals too. Jen is not the only, um, new principal to our district, to our SU. So, um, I've been making the, my rounds, uh, to the schools meeting with the principals, which I'll do every two weeks. Uh, Jen will also do that every two weeks and she will do, um, uh, teaching, teaching walkthroughs with the principals of their classroom. So in the case of Wyndham, it will be a kind of a short, a short trip to Marco's room and maybe she'll burn Jenna doing some instruction as well. But then the key part of that is that, um, the conversations that happen after, um, just to help calibrate and talk about what good teaching looks like. And to, we use the Charlotte Danielson rubric, the framework for, um, for teaching. So that's what we'll, we'll align to, um, and make sure that we're doing that work that we need. Scope and sequence, all that kind of stuff. So those are all things that Jen will do. I will sit down with, um, the principals each and talk a little bit more about nuts and bolts. Um, any management issues that they might have, staffing stuff, um, uh, or specific student concerns or family issues or whatever other kinds of challenges pop up. So Jen and I have done that and, um, once already and will continue to do that. And then, uh, yeah, and then as I think I've mentioned before, Jenna also is part of a coaching team, um, where she has uh, all of the elementary principals in the SU are part of a coaching group with, um, Erica McLaughlin, who is a Vermont Principal Association's Assistant Executive Director. She's been up to Wyndham, I think in person to visit and uh, I don't know if the Zoom meetings have started monthly or not, but, uh, those are, those are going. And Jenna also has a mentor, um, who's a current principal in the state of Vermont, um, as well for support. So lots of, lots of resources. We, we got her surrounded. Uh, with lots of support and resources for Jenna as, uh, she continues in this position, uh, at least on the principal realm and in the teaching realm as well. Um, so yeah, that's, that's my report. And then I will just conclude with this. Um, that there is a Wyndham Central Supervisor Union All Boards Retreat on October twenty-fifth. It's a Wednesday night. Um, and every board member is invited to come to that. It is, uh, at, in the Dutton Gym at Leland and Gray. Six o'clock, there's a meal. Uh, first will be, uh, prepared and catered by Jake, who does the food service in West River and is your food service provider as well. And, um, won't be the same as the kids' meal. So sorry about that. But then the meeting will happen afterward. You'll get to come and listen to all the different reports from all different districts. And updates from, um, you know, special ed and Jen and Greg and, um, the equity coordinator as well. So, um, it's kind of a fun, fun opportunity to get to know some other board members in the SU. And of course, your chair is a voting member of the SU board. Um, so, um, yeah, so that's all happening. Jenna will be asked to give a quick update on what's going on in Wyndham, um, at that meeting. So that is, uh, there. You guys are all welcome to join. And that is, oh, and you want to talk to a little bit about special ed services?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, what, what, are there specific questions I can answer about that? Or what, what was the, um, impetus for the question?
Well, I think, um, that, you know, Jenna and, uh, and Erin kind of alluded to that with her question is to, you know, there are special education services that have changed, um, as far as how those services are being deployed to the students. So well, if there's an update, you know, that could be shared.
Sure.
Um, so that folks know that that change is ongoing and what that's going to look like so that people are aware.
Yep. So you guys do have, you do have a special educator that comes to the building on a regular basis. Um, and it's not every day, um, but there is someone who does come up there and provide service. You also have, um, in the building, a special ed pair providing services as well. Um, we, and I say we, in public education and in education in general, have extensive shortages in certain areas. Uh, special education is one of those areas. Um, speech and language is one that Jenna mentioned is also a significant shortage area. If you, if you have any kids head to college soon, tell them to become a speech and language pathologist. It's a lot of money than that. And, um, there's a lot of work currently available. So, uh, Stephanie has had to get creative with, um, ensuring that IEPs are covered. So she's worked with a lot of outside, um, providers, um, to ensure that they have what, what, uh, that the kids have what they need on their IEPs. Um, counseling is another area, I believe, that we have done some of that with. Um, I don't know if that's happening in Wyndham to be honest. Or whether all the counseling is done by the, um, by the provider we have who's in person. Um, there might be a combination there too. But, um, yeah, so that's, that's just a massive shortage. It's nationwide right now. So we're, we're using online services to sort of supplement that. Um, that's happening in every building in the SU. Um, it's not just a Wyndham thing. So, um, yeah, that's, I guess that's the update, I guess I would say. But families were, families were, if you, if, if you were a family who receives services like that due to an IP, um, there was communication from Stephanie's office about the potential change prior to it occurring. It's my understanding. So.
Michael P., have your hand raised?
No, I just wanted to, um, thank Stephanie for coming to the school on a regular basis. I know when I drop the kids off in the morning, it's good to see her up there and doing her thing. So I just wanted to say thank you.
I'll pass that on.
More hands.
Um, yep, there's a couple of hands that came up. I think I see Crystal and then Bridget Blanchard.
Um, I'm just wondering, um, you know, we were told that somebody from the SU has to be in the building every day. Um, we were told that Bob's there every Friday and just kind of wondered why.
Um, well, I think the best way to say that is that we have, that the process for um, background checks on employees who are new to the state of Vermont is backed up. And that's again, a statewide problem with the database. So we are having other, other people who have been fully background checked on site until we, our own people in, in Wyndham have gone through that clearance. So that is, uh, what's happening. Those people have all gone through the state and local, uh, work, but just not through the federal. So uh, we have other administrators who are in attendance on a daily basis up there. Um, just to have someone in the building who has been through the more rigorous, um, federal background check.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bridget Blanchard?
Hi, um, I just wondered what, um, an equity coordinator does in the supervisor union.
Sure. Um, yeah, so the, the SU board, um, uh, passed an equity policy and all the districts have passed an equity policy in the last several years. And, um, the SU board decided to, um, put some money into the equity coordinator position to, I guess I would say operationalize the policy, um, is probably the best way to put it. But there's a lot of elements to the job description. Um, some of it is going to be leading equity work, uh, SU-wide through our Jedi team. Jedi is the Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Team, which has representatives from most of the buildings. Um, and, um, they are also doing policy and handbook analysis around language. Um, they are also doing some push-in teaching with kids. Uh, the person that we have is actually an elementary educator licensed. Um, they are also, um, you know, guiding leadership team around our mission, vision work, um, with an eye on equity. And equity can be lots of things. It can be race and religion and culture. And, um, it could also be about, um, uh, students of poverty, students with disabilities, ensuring that everybody has equitable access to, um, the education that's provided. So um, it's really, it's really just to have someone who's kind of their job to make sure that those things are, are happening on a regular basis and, um, they're shared throughout the SU. And, um, that job we, we assume will evolve. Um, but the person's brand new and the job is brand new. And so we'll see how that, uh, how that transitions, um, as we go through. But yeah, thank you for asking that. It's a good, uh, it's a good question. And, um, somebody we hired is, like I said, experienced elementary teacher, uh, with an, with an interest in this, this type of work. And, uh, yeah, we're excited to have her on board.
Thank you.
So that is it for me, Abby, unless you have other questions.
No, are there any, uh, questions from people in the room? Okay, so moving right along, board rules and norms. So I had asked for this to be put on the agenda and I'm just going to quickly go over, um, this is information that was taken from the Vermont School Board Association. Um, so quickly just going to read community engagement and vision, roles and responsibilities, which is, this is, uh, school board and superintendent. And we'll just kind of segue from there. So, uh, roles and responsibilities, school board. One, sees community input in a variety of settings and contexts to ensure engagement that is representative of the community itself. Two, ensures a climate of open communication at board meetings and throughout the district. Three, provides funding and resources for community engagement efforts. Four, approves a strategic planning process that includes the community in creating the vision for student achievement. Five, adopts the vision. Six, adopts board goals that support the vision. Seven, communicates the vision clearly to the community. Eight, keeps the vision at forefront of all decision-making. Nine, adopts policies needed to achieve the vision. Ten, allocates resources based on the vision. Eleven, monitors progress toward vision and refines the vision as necessary. Um, so those are the roles and responsibilities of the school board members. Um, the superintendent, one identifies opportunities for mutual exchange between the district and community. Two, ensures a climate of open communication, both internally and externally. Uh, three, uses funding for community engagement efforts that are inclusive of the whole community. Four, recommends a strategic planning process to the board that incorporates participation by diverse individuals representative of the community. Five, develops performance indicators based on data to measure progress toward the board's vision for student achievement. Five, develops performance indicators based on data to measure progress toward the board's vision for student achievement. And that will recommend performance indicators for board monitoring purposes, ensures short and long range goals and outcomes are developed and carried out on both the district and school level. Ensures staff professional development needs are met in order to implement the strategic plan. Six, works with the board to identify its role in supporting the vision. Seven, works with the board to develop plans for carrying out its goals. Eight, teams with board members to speak to groups within the community. Nine, uses the vision to guide recommendations to the board. This uses the vision to guide decisions throughout the organization. Ten, recommends policies needed to support the vision. Eleven, recommends resources needed to support the vision throughout the budgeting process, which prepares and disseminates information about progress toward the vision for the board, the staff, and the community. Provides data and evidence to the board so it can monitor the implementation of the strategic plan. Twelve, develops a process to solicit input from broad range of stakeholders on implementation of the strategic plan and vision. And thirteen, recommends changes to the vision and/or strategic plan based on data, research, and best practices, and/or changes to law or regulations. So those are just in a nutshell, kind of the different things that, you know, how things are carried out differently with different roles. So why I wanted this on the agenda, and I believe it's going to be important to maintain on the agenda, is being able to establish that vision and what was discussed is the school board's roles and responsibilities. And so there, I had mentioned in an email to Bob that I'm creating binders for everyone, for the board members. So this will be all information from the Vermont School Board Association. And what it's going to do is essentially take the information that we are required to be doing as a board and really apply it specifically to how, to Wyndham and how these roles can, you know, function at its best. So ensuring complete transparency and everyone having like a consistent idea of what's going on. So with this future for the next board meeting that we have in October, I think it's going to be, well, everyone will have their binders by then. And I would really like to really be able to brainstorm at the, have some ideas to bring forth at the next meeting to discuss short-term goals, long-term goals, and the vision and really getting that set in place so that the rest of the plans can follow through and everyone is collaborating to their best ability. So that's all that I wanted to add for that. Is there anybody else that has some information they'd like to share regarding board norms and rules?
Just have a clarifying question.
Sure.
Are you looking for me at the October meeting to give you guys options to start a strategic planning endeavor? Or are you looking at the October meeting for you guys to develop specific, a specific vision right then and there? Like what, what do you, what, what do you hope to accomplish at the end of that meeting in October?
So when the, the binders are going to have kind of outline that information, and you know, have some of it here, but I wasn't able to get it all together for the board. But there's ways to monitor and keep the self-assessment, how to kind of track, you know, policy review and making sure so it's, it's a little bit more tangible and visible than waiting for an agenda and kind of seeing what the updates are going to be. We'll be able to look ahead and know, you know, kind of how we're thinking about things. So for the next meeting, it would be again, on the agenda, but we're going to come at it where it's not just me bringing up, you know, the norms and, and things that we want to do as far as strategic planning, but have everyone on board to share kind of how all these parts and pieces can fit in, if that makes, it'll make more sense once everybody has, has the binder. It's just going to be essentially like very similar to the toolkit stuff that is accessible on the website. And I would recommend to the other board members, if they haven't already, to log in. There is a, you are a board member, so you are able to log in and you're all eligible for a free book from the School Board Association that they will mail to you. So that's just for the next meeting, have it on the agenda. And we'll be able to answer things more clearly because we'll have more structure to it, if that makes sense, Bob.
Yeah. Do you, do you want to connect with me in between to kind of talk through what you have in mind? Or do you want me just to put it on the agenda that you're going to run something about that? I guess is what I'm trying, like what's my role?
It, it's, I guess I will, I can, it's all the same information. So I can give you what is specific to Wyndham. So you kind of have your own binder, I guess. But that way it will be helpful. So if we're referencing something and we need to, you know, we all have the same information and it's not a scramble for folks when we're trying to figure stuff out, what the expectations are, that kind of stuff. And then yes, if we need your input, it's going to be clear to everybody what that input is, like what we're all asking from you, right? So I, at this point, I'm not looking at anything specific from you for the next meeting, but it's going to be in the pipeline.
Yeah, all right. So I'm not, I'm not preparing a strategic planning for, do any, at this time, just making sure in October that we continue this conversation, that people will have their binders and we'll, we'll talk more at that point.
Yes, sir. You got it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Awesome. Okay. So is there any questions for anybody on that? Oh, Dan Ross, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, this is kind of tangential to that. But me and Rory were recently in a, being greet for new school board members. I connected with one of the folks I was running that, Carrie Lamb, the Director of Operations. That's in the Vermont School Boards Association. And it's something I've been, you know, acutely aware is that there's not a centralized document storage or place for budgets, correspondence, current past actions of members, initiatives, documentation, information of any sort, really. And I'm really picking their brain to kind of understand with open meeting law, how that works. And if that's something that, you know, they could help guide us through. And maybe this speaks to my own, you know, organization needs, but I, I wasn't sure if this is the right section to kind of bring that up. But, you know, they have responded, they're going to bring it to their executive director. They're currently traveling, so it's kind of a, a bit of a delay at the moment, but they're going to see how, they have some ideas, but they're going to see how, if there's any problems with like levels of accessibility of information and how that relates to open meeting laws. But I just kind of wanted to throw that out there that it's something that, you know, may be, you know, related to, you know, the binders of information that we have and, you know, the ways that we can be transparent, but also have a central place where we have all of this information.
And, and Dan, I can, or yeah, I can, I can answer a little bit. So there is a, the Wyndham Central website has a section for the Wyndham School District with policies, minutes, agendas, all that in one place. I don't know if that's what you're talking about, that sort of repository, but that does exist on the Wyndham Central website. I just noticed that the Wyndham School website is a little bit outdated and I'm not sure, we should probably talk about that in October as well, how, who knows how to make that up today, but we could, they could be cross-linked as well so that you could access it from the Wyndham side as well.
Yeah, this is more about like, like PDFs, reports, things of that nature, where they're, they're kind of floating out there or, or, you know, we have to talk to the Supervisor Union. Maybe they're passed to previous board members. It's, it's really, you know, came, came about through onboarding that, you know, maybe there's critical information that I'm not getting up to speed because we just don't have a, a place, a box, right? A box account or, you know, what, what have you, a Slack, you know, something that we can reference. But also maybe it's open to the public. I'm not sure how that works yet, but I know that's something that Carrie's looking at.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, thank you, Daniel. Carrie, this is a big shout out to Carrie. She is amazing, very helpful. And I've always found her to be, if she doesn't have the answers, she always knows who to kind of go to to help get an answer. So I'm glad that she's, yeah. Crystal, I see your hand up.
So I would like some clarification as to what kinds of things school board members should be sending out to the public. Because as a school board member myself, I know we send stuff out about our regular meetings, our special meetings, our surveys, and those kinds of things, things where the public would come to our board meetings and become engaged. So I would like clarification on what kinds of things board members should be sending to the public? Because I don't believe it's just whatever you think the public should have.
Are you asking about something specific? About something specific that you received from a board member? It'd help to have context.
Well, we all received information on special ed that I found quite odd. I know myself, as a board member, we don't have the parents' emails. I know Wyndham is different because it's a small town. But if we had information such as that, that we thought parents should have, more than likely, we would send that information on to Bob, who would then decide if the principals should have it. So it could be sent out to the public. So I would like clarification from Bob or the AOE or what kinds of things should be sent to the public from board members?
Well, I guess to start off with what Crystal was talking about, so the West River Board does have, I mean, it's not really what she's talking about, but I can, it sort of bleeds in from what Dan was describing. The, on, the West River has a website that is a container repository for documents pertaining to their work, like long-term planning and the Act 46 process, a lot of those documents and budgetary stuff, presentations that are made to the public are on a website for people to find. I don't think that's really what Dan's describing, but there is a repository like that. I think, Crystal, you're talking more about a specific communication that was sent out by a specific board member. And I guess I don't have any knowledge of what, of what, I didn't receive anything, so I don't know what rules may or may not be out there. So I, I don't, I, I don't know that there are specific rules about what board members can and should send. I know that there's a significant difference between the level of, of engagements that board members have in bigger districts is, is different than they are in smaller districts. But I don't, I don't, I don't have any knowledge of any specific rules or guidelines about communication in that regard. And it may, and actually maybe the, and maybe the Vermont School Board Association would be the best group to, to ask about that, not so much the AOE, because they're the ones that support board members.
You might want to maybe reach out before your October meeting to find that information out.
Yeah, Crystal, you know, I have been talking to, you know, that board. I, I can definitely, you know, tack on that question and see, you know, what information they have.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so the, the email, I believe that you were referencing, Crystal, is most likely the email that I had sent for the Vermont Family Network, which is a resource for all Vermont families regardless of special education. So it was just a resource for people. If you need to advocate for your student, they are very well-versed in IEPs and 504s. So if families want to become more knowledgeable, there's a resource available to all Vermont families. It's not the specific to Wyndham. So if that was sent in error, then, or not, you know, if it wasn't supposed to be sent out, we will look into that and figure that out. But it was not meant to have any other purpose and be an additional resource to families. So with that being said, the business office changes. Let's move on to that.
Yep, I can talk about that. So I will just preface this by saying, when I took the Superintendent's Academy, which is a sort of a pre-service academy that you do prior to becoming a superintendent, I took that a couple of years ago. And one of the things that they point out in that is that you really, as a superintendent, you want to be in a place where you have an incredibly strong business manager. And because if you don't, you're going to make the news and not in a good way. So I was obviously knew Lori and I've known and worked with her for the last seven years and knew that I had that coming into Wyndham Central and felt really, really positive about that. And she and I have worked together since I've been at Leland and Gray and I have nothing but the absolute highest respect for her and the work that she does. That being said, she has informed me that she will be retiring. And she will be retiring in the, at the end of December of '24, which gives us about a 16-month lead up to that, which is incredibly generous of her to give us that lead. And the reason it's generous is that good business managers are incredibly hard to find. The, the complexities of Vermont funding, coupled with understanding public policy and understanding, and then of course, the accounting background as well, managing people, all of the diverse sets of skills that you have to have to be successful in that role don't come along on trees. And if they do, people can make, you know, three or four times that much that, than a, than a business manager in the private sector. So you really need a special kind of person. So we have to really begin that process. As a transitionary there, I just want to back up a little bit. And some of you guys were obviously not on the board at this point. But prior to COVID, we had a, an assistant business manager who was part-time assistant business manager and part-time HR. And she left just before COVID and when, and when she was replaced, as we entered COVID, the, and the, the increase in the change in the number of staffing, the, the, the transitory nature of this, people coming and going and people exiting the profession during COVID, the need was increased as a full-time person for HR, which meant that the half-time assistant business manager position was never filled due to that need. What we are hoping to do, what we intend to do this, this fiscal year is to elevate a person who's already internal central office, who's in Lori's office, to the title of assistant business manager. Some of that work that she'll be doing will begin some cross-training with Lori. Some of the stuff that she will not be able to continue doing, we're going to increase one position that's already half-time to full-time to take on some of that extra work. So the overall implication for this fiscal year is a half-time to a full-time employee. We will begin the search and we'll be discussing the budgetary implications of that at the SU Board meetings as they prepare their budget. And you guys will find out about that, or Abby, as in her role on the SU Board can, can have a voice in that. We hope to have someone in place by July 1, a new business manager that we would have an overlap period with Lori, just because of the complexities of the job. So that in next fiscal year will have implications of having, you know, some double, double business managing for that period of time as well. So we wanted to give you guys the advance notice of the implication for this fiscal year and talk about Lori, who's been in the district for over 20 years now, and her, her desire to leave us at the end of 2024, which is, which is heartbreaking, but I'm so happy for her. And we just wanted to share that out with you guys. So each board is being informed of that this month. So happy to take questions or if Lori's still, whether she can take questions. But that's what, that was, that agenda item as well.
I just want to say, you know, I haven't been a board member for the longest time, but you know, my interactions with Lori, you know, you're fantastic and incredibly knowledgeable and answer all my questions, whether or not, you know, they're, they're ignorant or, or stupid. So, you know, I appreciate your, your work and what you do.
Thanks, Dan. Never a stupid question. Remember that.
That's right.
Crystal's hand up.
Crystal?
I just want to say that we wish Lori all the best. You're wonderful to work with and I hope you enjoy your free time.
Thank you very much, Crystal. You still have me around for like 16 months though, you know. You'll be sick of me by the time I go.
I don't know about that, Lori.
You know what they say about short timers is they'll speak whatever's on their mind after they're short timer. So we'll hear what Lori really thinks is coming up in a few.
I can't see the audience. I don't know if anybody has their hands up in the, in the room there for questions?
Not about this.
Yeah, I, I just taking a step back. Crystal's question about communication. Crystal, do you have the Vermont, the School Board Association Essential Workbook?
Yes.
Okay, so eight, page eighty-two may answer, well, page eighty-two to, I don't know, it's a couple of pages. There's a communication section. I think that might answer your question about what, what's appropriate to, to communicate and how it should be done for a board member.
Thank you, Lori. Can we move along to the food service update? Or we still have business office changes?
Well, that was it. It was no action required, just informational.
Okay, we'll move on to the food service up.
So I think this is going to be probably tag team with Greg here, but we have a contract that we, is at the, I think Jenna, you must have it, right, for the board there? So this is very similar to your contract with West River from last year. I will tell you that there is an increase in the cost per meal. It's a vended meal contract of about twenty percent. We're, you know, seeing the, the increase in the food costs and the increase in the labor costs coming through there. So that is, it's three fifty for a breakfast meal and five eighty now for a lunch meal. So not much else changed in the contract other than the delivery is being done by West River. And the service part is being done by Wyndham. So that was just clarified in this contract as well. I do also want to, you know, take questions about the contract, but I also want to restate last time, I think it was last month, I was at the board meeting and gave you financial outcomes for fiscal year twenty-three. And one of the, one of the funds, the food fund, I think I told you that it was actually made money. And I was incorrect in that. I had forgotten that I had transferred money from the general fund to the food service fund to make up for the deficit. So really, the food service program, as expected, I mean, most all food service programs lose money, and the taxpayers do have to pick up, subsidize it, lost about eight thousand dollars last year. So I just wanted to clarify that. So as we're going into fiscal year twenty-five, you know, understanding that there, there typically is, you know, the, the taxpayers do have to subsidize the food program. So is there any questions about the contract? We're not a month, not quite a month behind, but.
So, so it was my understanding, you know, we were, and this is going back, but that that food service position was a full-time position. And now it sounds like it's been split. So how does that affect cost? If we were paying for a position for the food service person to be a full-time person? Remember how we changed that? Would that be more hireable?
No, you were not, never paying for a full-time food service position. You were paying for vended meals to be delivered. It's a different model than having, you know, like West River does have a food person in Jamaica and a food person in New Brook and Townsend. That was not the model. Last year, the model was that you were purchasing food, the meals from West River. They were preparing them down there, and then you were paying to have them delivered and served up here.
Right. And that was, we paid, was it like point two five of that position? But that was changed from a part-time to a full-time. Because I believe that that also was delivered to the Jamaica school. So was that something that's changed? Has that changed our cost at all?
It looks like.
Yeah, I'll let Greg jump in on the staffing piece of this because he manages the food service staff. So he can probably give us a little background on that.
Yeah, so, so last year you paid for a, a halftime person who picked up meals and showed up and served them. So that halftime, say, four hours a day, two hours of that went to the Jamaica person who delivers to you, and two hours of that were added to Lori's job. And that is how that job went from a point four to a point six on your admin assistant job. And that is how we afforded this year to make the food service job in Jamaica a full-time job, because Jamaica is absorbing the other half of the point eight of that through the West River program. And so that is how, that is kind of how the, the person you had, who was a point five, got split into those two, if that makes sense.
Can I just say, so my understanding was, so our admin assistant was going to be point five, part-time? And then what, point one was added to that for food service? So it's point six, right? Not point two?
Yeah, it, yeah, it is a point six.
Okay.
I think I mixed that points for a second there, sorry. I did, I did. My, my own brain was trying to sort that one out. Yeah, so you had like, you had, I think, I think previously it was a three and a half hour day for that person. And so like an hour and a half was added there, which I think is about a point one, right, or, or an hour was added there as a point one. And, and I think an hour and a half or so of, to two hours of the, the Jamaica, current Jamaica position is covered with making, prepping and delivering that food. Plus there's the mileage piece. I mean, you're talking about a, you know, it's a, it's about twelve bucks a day, right? You're like twenty-two miles round trip, whether it's from Leland and Gray or from Jamaica, they're both about eleven miles away. So it's a, it's a twenty, twenty-two mile per day round trip. I think this, however, though, I do think that this will potentially help to save you a little bit by having Lori serve so that you may not be as far over. But you also have to remember that last year you were, say, eight thousand under, but you also had the person who was working in your food service was gone for the last two months, and it was done with volunteers. So, you know, that, that number probably, I think when we agreed to food services, if you go way back to the previous board, I think we estimated it to be almost a twenty thousand dollar a year loss. So the idea that you came back to eighty, eighty-three, eighty-five hundred is actually a, a pretty good deal. I'm, I'm going to be honest with you. I think West River ate some money last year, and that is how you only lost that much. Because I believe, or Wyndham Central, you know, dealt with eating a lot of that mileage and some of those additional hours. But, I mean, it's, it's hard to speculate now, I mean, look back. But I, you know, I, I believe that that is how we ended up only losing, say, eighty-three hundred, was that some of the mileage and whatnot was covered by Wyndham Central slash West River and, and having a couple of months of that, that employee salary not be, so.
And then it also started this year with volunteers as well. So when, when did that actually pick up with? When did it start with somebody?
Uh, last Tuesday. And I think that that person also delivered, I think we maybe used, gosh, I think we, we used maybe five volunteers. I think we do a little over a week, you know, a week and myself being the last day of it. So.
Well, I'd like to give a big shout out to all the volunteers that have helped, whether it was the end of the year last year, starting off this year. Your dedication to the children in this community is, you know, not underestimated by many, so a big thank you to all those folks. And to you guys for, you know, making sure that that stays in place, because that is important. And as a parent, I can say it's been really nice having that option for the kiddos. So any questions from other folks?
I will need a, a motion for the board chair to sign the contract from the boards.
Oh, we have a question from Crystal.
Uh, this question is for Lori. It's not just for Wyndham, it's kind of for all the kids. I know we have to fill out the lunch form, the free lunch form paperwork in order for you guys to get some relief back. My question is, can you do one form for a family? Or are we supposed to do a form for each child?
I believe you can do one for, for one family. I would have, I would have to double-check with my child nutrition guru, Donna Albin. But I believe you can do one for a family. And I really appreciate you doing it. It is very hard for us to get applications in because all students eat for free in the whole state of Vermont, which is phenomenal. But we also depend on the free and reduced numbers for other grants and other funding sources. So, you know, just really, I appreciate it, and I would love for all the boards to get that message out that, for people to please fill out their forms.
If you could just double-check that we only have to do one form per family, because I only did the one.
Okay, I will do so, Crystal.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so Lori, you need a motion for the contract to be signed? What is it that's?
Yes, for the, the motion would be that the board chair could sign the contract on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second, your motion.
Okay, any discussion? So Daniel, I know you've, you've taken a, a look at the budget. What are your thoughts with this change? Do you have any input that you feel one way or the other about?
I'm sorry, I was talking to myself on mute. Now, I have looked at some of that, but not yet, because it's, it's really a question of the, the whole bigger picture. But yeah, I'll, I can definitely get some information together, you know, for next meeting, if that helps.
So Lori, is there something that maybe we could see, like the numbers and, and kind of see the difference and stuff? And have it for next meeting, or does it need to be decided right now?
Well, if you're going to sign the contract, I mean, the, you're getting the service, so the contract, you know, probably does need to be signed. But I can do, we can do a projection for sure of, you know, what this is going to cost. We have some data from last year, you know, how many students ate and that type of thing. And I can get the information from Jenna of how many students are eating on a regular basis and, you know, project out what the total cost is going to be for Wyndham. The, the revenues are a little harder to project, but I can do my best on that.
Lori, I have a, a question. I remember there was a previous document of like a comparison between a, a couple of different options. Is that applicable here?
So I believe, Dan, that was under, you know, previous board, they asked us to look at some different options in the community, you know, providing the meals, et cetera. But it really was determined that the, the least, how do I say this, the easiest thing to do was to buy the food from West River. You know, we were getting down on the timeline. School is going to start, all of that. And there are so many regulations around the food service. People have to be trained. Donna is, she'll be working with Lori to get trained, do all of the coursework that needs to happen. It's, it's a lot so far for an outside service, other than a food service place, to do it is really tough. So I don't think it's applicable in this case.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Greg, have his hand up.
Yeah, Lori, I was just going to support what you were saying. Yeah, so, so with food service, you have like, you have menu requirements. You have to have certain amounts of things on the menu every month. You have record keeping, which then leads to, you know, everything that you have to do in order to get the reimbursement. So, so generally, a restaurant is not going to meet any of those guidelines for you. They're not going to provide you with a menu. They're not going to. Because our menus have to, I mean, literally, our menus have every bit of the food that is in that menu, right? So it's, it's not just the, the recipe, but you have a recipe that tells you what's in it, that tells you the calories, the sugar intake, right, so that you don't go over and you're not too low. And so, yeah, there, there really is a lot of, a lot of back, you know, backend work that happens with just trying to get the reimbursements. And, and really, the, the only path forward with that is, is using another food service provider. And with Leland and Gray, you know, West River being the one that's right there, it just, it's, it's what makes the most sense. I mean, I would guess that a restaurant would end up costing you three to four times whatever our number ends up coming out at. So say it's twenty thousand, I would say they're going to cost you sixty to eighty, because you're not going to get the reimbursements. Plus, the meal is going to cost you more, the delivery is going to cost you more. So it, it's unfortunate. You know, your previous board was really let down because I think for, I mean, their full existence, there was always an option that you could do in the state to just choose to not offer food. And when they took it away, they took it away, and I think it was, what was it, Lori? May, June? You know, long, long after budget season, and it really left them in, in, in the lurch of, of how to do it. The thing was, I think they were, I think you all were one of two schools in the state that when they took it away, that it affected. So, you know, in, in, I kind of view it as you guys, you, you optioned as long as you could. And, and then, you know, you, you just made the most financially sound choice you could make to, to get your kids food. And, and that's kind of where we ended, so.
And Abby, if you don't mind if I just answer Crystal's question, because I got an answer, one form.
Go for it.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we are, we still have the motion on the table. And I guess with the discussion, I'm, I don't know if we can figure this out with votes, or if there's more people want to say, if we move forward with this, we're agreeing to the contract? Or I guess we, you know, oh, Michael P. has his hand raised.
I'm assuming that this contract is for this fiscal year, the current fiscal year. And if that is the case, what is the cost in relation to what was budgeted?
Michael, I don't have those numbers. I'll have those for the next, that's what I was talking about. I'll, I'll certainly have those for the next meeting. But you, you are serving less students than you were last year as well. So we also budgeted more. So I think that you'll probably come out okay in the budget, just from a high-level thirty thousand foot look. But I'll dig in and look at, look at some, look at some projections.
So in that case, would it be appropriate for the board to choose not to vote in favor of the, this, at this time, and then put it towards the next meeting?
You could do that. I mean, West River could decide not to bring food to you any longer as well, if there's no contract in place. I mean. I mean, they're, they're doing it because I'll fall on the sword, I didn't get the contract done in a timely manner to the beginning of the year. So it, it's really up to the board.
I was just gonna add that it seems like a, a good faith, they're doing it on good faith. And so having, having, prove it on good faith makes, makes sense to me as well. And then if you guys want to explore it, uh, as we develop a budget uh, for next year, what other options might be, as the board has done previously, that could be something that you guys could do as well.
I think we should.
I think we should just move forward with it for this year. Lori seems to believe that we're in a good place financially. And it probably is our best financial decision.
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, thank you, Rory, and thank you, Lori. Um, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes, Lori.
So Lori, will you send that? Will you, is there an electronic option for Abby to sign up that you could send to her?
Um, I, there is, or it is sitting at the school right now. Jenna has it in a folder. So if Abby stops by, she can sign it and just, they can scan it to us.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. Um, so pre-budget discussion.
So I, I wanted to just put that on there because I know, uh, you know, this summer with all the tumult of, of opening and staffing, that there was, that there was quite a bit of conversation about art, for example, um, counseling, one of the two things that came up. Um, and one of the comments I'd made at the time that I just wanted to revisit was that, and I guess in music is another, another one of the specials that Jenna was referencing earlier that are all, and the music is done via volunteer. Um, but the others that you're, you're paying for. And the comment that I made was, at the time, was that people felt like these were elements of core programming that you believed that Wyndham should be offering. And maybe this will come up more in the visioning conversation you're gonna have, Abby. But um, I want people to take an opportunity, if, if, at your pleasure, of course, to maybe list some of the things you want to think about offering. And um, no commitments, just making lists of ideas. And then as we get into the budget development phase and it looks like into the visioning phase, um, we could have to price out some of those things and give you some hard numbers so that you could be informed as you entered um, the budget cycle this fall. Um, and so I just didn't know if that was something that you wa- as a board wanted to undertake at this point, whether it's too soon. Um, but just the REAP, the REAP grant that you're using to fund um, both of those, the art and the counseling, um, will, will, as I believe Lori can back me up on this, but I don't think will be available to you after this year. She's nodding, so.
That's true. Sorry.
So that's, that's, we'll get the number ten, twelve, a little less than that, was it under ten, wasn't it?
Yeah, I'd have to look, to be honest.
So that's revenue that you won't have coming in um, to offset any expenses that you might wanna do for programming. So Abby, it's really, it's really, as the chair, Julie, your um, decision I just won is something to get on the radar, start talking about and thinking about. Um, so it's up to you, what you guys wanna do with that at this point. You could pass over and move on, or you could have some structured conversation about how you wanna, what things that you wanna have your school offer.
I have a question. Is this something that we can approach parents about? Maybe just ask for feedback? Um, and see if they've got any suggestions or ideas, being that they're sending their children. So they, they may, you know, have some ideas that we don't think of, or have ideas of what's important to them as parents of the elementary school children. That's, I just think that might be a good option. At least we know we, we could offer things that are more important to the parents and students, not just us.
Yeah, just to piggyback off that, um, perhaps this is a good use of a survey or, you know, a, an open discussion is good. But also maybe, you know, get a survey together, get some data and see, you know, what, what folks are, are thinking in terms, terms of hours, days, you know, weeks, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yes, and uh, I think that's a great idea, um, but also thinking of uh, including the community. Um, there are other, you know, families in the community that may not have their children attend uh, the school here, but um, they have value as well, so they may have inputs because there could be things that are added that they could participate in. So um, you know, those are things uh, that should also be considered and maybe that would be um, kind of collaborating with the town clerk. Um, once we get some ideas and maybe um, an email like formatted so that, that could be forwarded for them to distribute to community members. Um, just some brainstorming ideas there. Uh, Crystal, looks like your hand is up.
Yeah, I'm good.
Oh, Michael P., your hand is up?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing in regards to putting it out to the community. I think it's important to include the entire community, given that it's the community school as a whole. The community is the body that um, chooses to fund the school and they should really have a say. Uh, I think it's also, might be interesting to think about um, including conversations in the survey regarding uh, volunteerism. I think it's important to include folks that might want to volunteer their time to the school in uh, various sundry ways. I know that there's a local um, scouting group that, I don't know, they probably are out of New Fane or Townsend these days, I'm not really sure. But I know that they work a lot of times with schools and have various projects. Um, we also have a huge um, hu- huge amount of knowledge in our community regarding uh, you know, foreign language and arts and pottery and farming and all kinds of things that, uh, theater, for instance, that maybe we don't use to the fullest. So it might be important to include those things. Um, and maybe when we look at funding a project, let's say for theater, for instance, maybe part of it is funded with uh, an instructor and part of it is, you know, a group of volunteers that come in to help that instructor. I think it'd be good to ensure that we are involving our community when, when and if possible. Thanks.
Might pop into, I would just say that I think that's hugely important. And it would be helpful, helpful if the community was involved in the vision first. And then that would drive who comes in the school and teaches enrichment or whatever extra projects. We wanna do that opposed to who's out there and available. This way, we're more, we've decided, okay, we're really invested in robotics or we're invested in civic or community engagement with students, you know, service projects. We're not just, we're not sort of taking it all in and, and picking and choosing from a menu. We're thinking strategically, this is who we wanna be, this is who we want our students or the experiences we want them to have by the time they leave here. And then how do we achieve that? And then how do we use the enrichment and, and our community? So if the community's involved in the vision work, that will drive how we use our enrichment and special time.
So maybe we start the conversation with our survey, with what is the vision of the school with the community? And then that drives the curriculum, is that what you're saying, Jenna?
And then all that drives the budget. Yep. So my suggestion would be, and I think that's a great idea, my suggestion would be that the board tasks, sorry Jenna, but the principal, with developing a survey that could be shared out through multiple ways in the community, through the town clerk, through the, through the parents, through the board, um, to, to collect that information. Um, I know it's tough as a teaching principal, she's teaching all day long, to have time to develop that uh, tool. Maybe there's a board member that would wanna assist her in that development, um, but. Simple Google tool could be used to do that. Um, but yeah, that would be my suggestion and I think that's a great, great next step. And it sounds like it aligns kind of with the work that Abby was talking about anyways.
Look at all that collaboration, go team. Um, awesome. So, so that, I guess, yes, they all go hand in hand about the, the, you know, discussion you're talking about. Is that like, you want to keep this going for now? Um, do we want to, you know, once Jenna get, is able to create that or we help get that survey out, so clearly we'll have that on for the next agenda, um, which will come from the community. But is there anything we as a board should be thinking along those lines? Um, I see that we have uh, building needs. Um, so aside from the community's ideas on the building needs, I think um, that is definitely something. The parents have their kids in the school, um, so that could be, and they're actually more likely to have been in the school and notice things that they want to have changed, so maybe we could do the opposite for building needs and start off with the families to see what their thoughts are and then kind of grow from that to the community. Um, so that we can prioritize and start addressing uh, building stuff.
Well, and, and Abby, to add to that too, the um, five or six years ago, uh, there was a um, needs assessment done of all the buildings in the SU. Greg has some information on that. It's a bit outdated now. Um, but we use that, that, that work to develop capital plan to talk about investments in the building. Because as you know, some of the stuff's expensive, you can't do it all in one year. Whether it requires bonds or whether it requires multi-year savings plan to set money aside. I wonder if, again, a, a board member would wanna sit with Greg to, to look at that and maybe be like a capital needs subcommittee member of one, to meet with Greg to like review what that original six-year ago plan has on it, what's been done, what hasn't been done. And then maybe that person could report back to the full board with at least the starting place of what we knew we needed a little bit ago. And that could also start that, that conversation. So if someone interested in that work, um, I'd recommend they reach out to Greg and maybe connect with him to, to do that.
Are there any volunteers on the board right now that would be interested in that role?
That's sure, I can meet with Greg.
All right, Daniel. Um, I believe, Michael P., is there a hand up?
Yes, it is. Um, while we're talking about the building, there's like a tile that has been missing in the ceiling in the principal's office for like two years. Can that just get replaced?
We can probably get a size of that. Um, we can see what Greg has in stock. I'm guessing there's not a stock and supply up in Wyndham. But we can, I mean, they, they come in bundles of, I think, twelve or ten in a pile. Greg, you know, can you speak to that a little bit?
Eight, yeah, there's eight of them in a bucket and, and a, in a package. They're uh, you know, the, the ones that we've been using at most of the other schools, which are different than theirs. Uh, theirs are the, kind of the, um, they have like a kind of a notch around them, so they're, they tend to be a little more expensive. Uh, but I'm sure we can put um, one in there, uh, just to at least build a gap, right? So that you're not looking at a hole in the ceiling. Uh, so, and I, and I would be willing to bet I can, I can pull one out of them, out of another school, uh, you know, just, just to get that one, so not, not a problem.
It's not quite the principal's office, I just wanna say, it's like just another office. So I'm not personally complaining, but you know, we use it for kids and for other services now, so.
Well, it is a, it's a fire code thing too, I think they have to be covered, so.
Okay.
Not, not a problem. You, you're not asking too much, that's for sure.
I haven't even been in there really, to be honest with you, so I'm here. This is my spot right here.
Excellent. Um, is there other things that anyone would like to add, uh, like to this discussion? Um, programming was on there, so I believe that's where you were talking about, like extracurricular type items, Bob? So that would be the kind of piece that's going out to the community and kind of coming back through and making decisions that way. And then the building needs will do from the parents, reverse? Anything else anybody wants to talk about that, uh, oh, Daniel, is your hand up?
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, this is, this is more of an open question, I guess, to, to Bob and uh, you know, perhaps the, the way things worked previously. But, but, but how did we find volunteers previously for like extracurriculars like that? Um, you know, is it, is, is it, is it another case of working through the clerk and kind of putting the word out or other individuals that just came up to the board or et cetera? I mean, I, you know, I, I have my own ideas of, you know, who I could tap on perhaps to, you know, teach art or music or et cetera. But, you know, in, in terms of getting like a conclusive list of like, these people have these skills and, you know, or perhaps be willing to donate X amount of time per week or month or et cetera. Like, is that something we could?
I'm gonna be honest, yeah, because I'm new, I don't have any idea how it was done in the past in Wyndham. But I will say this, Wyndham is the only school in the SU that, that relies as heavily on volunteers for programming. And, and just, and I don't wanna nitpick the language, but you guys have each called it extracurricular. I'm talking about curricular work. I'm, when I think of extracurricular, I'm talking about that, that's more like after-school stuff. Curricular is what you do, what you design your programs to be. So you're doing reading, you're doing math, you're doing science, you're doing social studies, you're doing art, you're doing music. Um, you're supposed to be doing library, um, research skills and, and, and library work. Um, you can do, well, you know, world language was mentioned early by somebody. Um, certainly sort of tech and farming type stuff, computers, uh, farming. Um, I mean, the, the list is endless really of what you can do. Certain elements of those, I would, I would just caution you guys to think about as curricular, not extracurricular. And I don't have the definition at my fingertips right now, but I will bring into discussion in October, um, which areas of those are required to have licenses and which ones are not. Um, because that's an important distinction as well, and some volunteers may be also licensed or may not be. So we wanna talk a little bit about that too. And of course, they always have to be background checked, um, before they're in the building too, so. Um, but I don't know the long story. I know that at least one of them was a former teacher. Um, so clearly she retired and joined in helping out, so like that's, that's a, that was an obvious connection. But I don't know about all of them, to be honest.
Uh, I, and I appreciate the uh, clarification on curricular versus uh, extracurricular. And yeah, that was my follow-up question, is how does that work in terms of background checks and, you know, licensing and things like that? Uh, you know, if you could, you know, disseminate some of that information, I think that would help.
Yep, I'll do, I'll bring it next time.
I can say that we currently only have one subject that's volunteer taught. And those are, and it's taught by two teachers who were former teachers here who were retired and then went through the process um, of getting background checked and have been here for a long time. And we're lucky to have them, but it's the only subject that's volunteer-led that we depend on.
Is that music?
Um, yeah, that's music. So art is stipended, PE we pay through the union and and then that's it for, that's all we have. Yeah, I think that's it.
That, so that's the rest of the staff here, to answer my original question.
Well, they, yeah, so those are the specialist teachers, they're not quite on staff all the time. So when we talk about the staff, maybe we answered them, two teachers.
Either, you know, paid or unpaid, both in the same category.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, I'm just curious, cause there seems like there is a lot of vehicles here of people like, and I'm wondering if that employment is offsetting the budget to be forecasted higher than what it was actually budgeted.
I, I mean, Lori's still on the line, but I don't believe that it's, we've gone outside of what was budgeted for special teacher, for specialists.
And the only thing I'll add to that is that we, we definitely in the opening weeks of school had um, at least one additional body there to help support the opening and the transition, as there were a lot of new faces, as Jenna pointed out. Uh, but I believe Jenna's, that, that's being phased out um, as well, so. Um, but yeah, the, the other cars you're seeing probably are um, the central office administrators who have been up there, as I mentioned earlier as well, so.
So to kind of circle back, um, when we send the email out to, after collaborating with Jenna on what kind of questions and what we'd be looking to ask the community, um, it'll be specific to, is it curricular and extracurricular? Um, do we need to have that clarification, Bob, first before we send anything out? Because then we can also tack on to that. Are there people interested in becoming volunteers in the community? And what is your skill set, sort of like how to get back? And then how they could go through the process to become a volunteer of the background check, um, versus not having a background check? That, you know, being able to put that out in one communication would be kind of time-saving.
Yeah, and I can get some of that, some of it's, some of it's gonna be nitty-gritty, but I can get that to you guys as well. It's gonna be, it's gonna be you and Jenna who are doing that work, is that what I heard?
Yeah, I think I'll too, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll get something out to you guys as soon as I can on that. Um, y- yeah, I guess the, the distinction I wanna make really is like the, the board through community input then, you know, gets, sets that vision, as you pointed out earlier. Um, and that vision should include like, Um, and that vision should include like, what is it that we value? Like, I, I heard a lot of really passionate people speaking about art as an example when that was on the table um a few months ago. And there were people that felt strongly like that ought to be something that we just do. And you guys do, you pay for art. So the question is like, is that art instruction sufficient? And I don't mean the quality of it, I mean the quantity of it. Uh, is that, is that match the, the importance that you have attached to it, for example? Um, same with music. Uh, is music is the, is the quantity of time that we've committed to it? And we aren't, we aren't committing financially to that one in particular, but um if that volunteer happened to not be available anymore, would we want to just end the music? Um, or, you know what I mean? Like, so the, things that we believe are really important to our program should be part of our program. And that just, that's a fiscal element that I wanted to make sure people understood. You can offset that or you could get some volunteers and you don't have to do it, but you, but having those conversations about what we're committed offering on a regular basis regardless of volunteers is great. And then maybe the volunteers come in and do the additional stuff, the extra stuff, the fun stuff, that's beyond those core programmings. Um, robotics or an engineering club or a farm club or, you know, whatever those other things might be, those things would be more um volunteer-driven maybe. So, I don't know. Uh, just, it's just something we wanna, we wanna wrestle with and talk through and um again, I don't know how we, I, I don't know why, how and why we ended up where we're at, but I just want those things to be talked about since we are approaching budget season and those things all have implications, as you know.
Yes, sir. Couldn't agree more. Thank you so much. Um, so Rory, I think only one of us would be able to collaborate with Jenna. Do you want to, I know you have been super busy. Do you, would you want to do that or? It's up, uh, yeah, okay. So, right on. Okay, perfect. Go team. So you guys uh got that squared away. Um, Crystal, looks like your hand is up?
I just wanna point out that when you guys do volunteers, volunteers don't have a commitment. So if they decide for whatever reason, they cannot show up or whatever, that creates a big problem and it's probably gonna create a big problem for parents who want these programs in place. And like the suggestion of the pottery at the top of the hill. Um, you know, you then come into the situation like you did with the farm where many of us were upset that, you know, our kids were interacting with everybody and nobody could tell us who had background checks and that kind of thing. People that are working with school kids have to have background checks. When you go with volunteering, there's not a commitment. Um, and I'm sure people like the Corby family, they're going to want a commitment.
I think there's a way that we can navigate that. And I think that if we are having volunteers come into the school, that they would have to be vetted in some way. And maybe, maybe that looks like short-term sections. You know, maybe, maybe they commit to coming in three or three days. If, and for example, if we're talking about an extracurricular, maybe they'll have like a shorter sections where the commitment isn't so overbearing. And it's something that they can commit to, like for a month, they'll come in once or twice a week after school, something like that. I think that they, I think that those sort of concerns can be managed if we just break it off into small bites so that not any one volunteer feels like they have this huge burden that they have to come in every day for the next eight months of a school year. Um, and it's so that we don't want our students to have to suffer, like you said, if, if for some reason they can't come because the commitment becomes too long or too overbearing. So I think that's a really good point. And I think there are ways that we can navigate that with some thought.
But, but again, there's no consequence to that volunteer if they don't fulfill the obligation. There's a consequence to the student.
Right. And that's why we have to do our due diligence and, you know, choosing who we allow very carefully.
Daniel?
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, yeah, that, that, that was another uh thought that came to mind, uh, you know, kind of piggyback off of Crystal is uh, you know, I, I think it's important to get a list of, say, volunteers. Uh, you know, hopefully in the case of, you know, there's one person that's doing it, hopefully we can find, you know, audibles, right? We can find alternatives. So if one person feels like they can't meet the commitment at a particular time, you know, another person that is also background checked, that is also vetted, you know, can, can take their place, you know, in, in a given week or something like that. But, but, but furthermore, like through, like for, for each type of activity, that curricular activity that we're talking about, I think it might be important in the survey to discern whether or not, you know, the community, but especially parents of the school are comfortable with it being volunteer-led or um, or actually stipend, right? Like maybe, maybe there's a comfortability with music, right? I'm just throwing out hypothetical. And maybe there's comfortability with volunteers on uh music, but maybe not on pottery, right? Or maybe, you know, art, but, but not robotics. And so maybe that could be added to the survey to kind of decide, you know, whi- which ones we should focus on stipend and which one, you know, we could possibly hypothetically work with a, a volunteer, a group of volunteers.
Excellent. Thank you, Daniel. Um, now, uh, I know we're getting late here, but in the very beginning, um, Lori, Erin Keogh had a question, and I'm not sure we answered all of her questions. Um, so, uh, Erin, is Erin still there, I hope?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so Erin, um, what, what did we not answer for you?
Um, just wanted, I guess, more clarification on the Act 127 and what the, um, I guess we'll call them penalties would be or the change of way that things would be from the ADMs.
Right, Erin, um, the, the penalty, as it was known before, the threshold um cost per student is actually on hiatus till 2029. Um, however, there are some other um things in place that will trigger a review committee. So, for example, if the cost per student goes up by more than 10% um in a given year, then the, this will trigger a review by, I'm assuming, the AOE, um, because they do need to, you know, there still needs to be some sort of uh system in place because we're, you know, the whole state is part of one funding source, right? So, um, so that will be in place. Um, tax rates can't go up more than, there's a 5% maximum on tax rates going up. However, if it does go above that, then that is something else that triggers a review. So there will be different triggers that happen throughout. Um, the process, of course, is is new this year. Um, so I'm learning about it, you know, as we go. Um, the counts will happen as normal, uh, and then the weights will be different. Um, and I plan to go to every board uh to explain the different weights and how they calculate through to a tax rate when we get to that point. Um, so it's, it's, your question is very timely because as they're talking about the budget and, you know, I'm hearing all of these things, capital needs assessments and things like that that are needed, you know, I'm also thinking, how is this going to affect the Act 127? Um, and what, what will that look like? Uh, the other thing that, um, which is not actually part of Act 127, but it, it definitely will play in is the CLAs. Um, you know, how low they were. Uh, I believe Wyndham is being reappraised at this point in time. Um, so that CLA may come up, which will help um with the tax rate as well. So there's, there's lots in play right now that I don't have solid answers on. But I can tell you as far as thresholds, penalties, that type of thing, on hiatus till 2029. But there are things in place that will trigger uh reviews.
So with, with that, and just for clarification, that would be a 5% increase over last year's budget? Or would it be the average daily membership for like the state, what the allotment is for um the education fund, like wha- whatever it is right now, 17, 8, 5, 5? I can't remember the number.
Um, so the, the threshold is, you know, that, that number doesn't matter anymore. The, the 5% is on the actual tax rate. And so it, it, there is a maximum tax rate increase of 5%. So, um, however, if you hit that, it throws you into a review. Um, I think where I'm looking at, uh, because that is actually before the CLA is applied. Um, where I'm looking at for all of our districts is the cost per pupil, right? So, you know, everything, it's, it's a simple formula. It's expenditures minus any, any revenues that come from other sources than the Ed Fund. And then that's your Ed spending divided by your equalized, used to be equalized pupils, it's gonna be called, long-term weighted average. Um, and so, you know, with Wyndham's drop in students this year, um, you know, that will play into a higher cost per pupil. And so if that cost per pupil goes up more than 10%, then it will throw Wyndham into, uh, as well as potentially other districts in the SU um into a review process with the AOE. And I don't know what that review process looks like yet. Um, I don't think the AOE actually knows what that review process looks like yet, so.
I tried reading the language of Act 127 and didn't seem like they had an answer for that yet.
No.
Figure it out. I'm sure you'll give us that information.
Yeah, yeah. It, it, you know, I really, I really have no idea. I don't even know who the review people will be, to be honest with you. So we'll, we'll find out as the time goes on.
Thank you.
But great question, good question for timing here.
Yes, thank you very much, Erin. That's an excellent question. And uh, that would be something as we're talking about the vision and long-term planning, we should have Mark somewhere, you know, continue to be talking about how that, that could impact um our, our community. So, um, thank you again, Erin, and thank you, Lori. Now, um, were there, is there anything else, Erin? That, or did that cover it for you?
Yep, that's on, on my side.
Okay. Um, all right, is there any other pre-budget discussion um of things people want to talk about? I don't see anybody's hands up. Okay, um, I don't know, um, if, is, for, well, we'll invite you, Bob, to executive session once the motion's made. Um, but is this something that Lori would need to be a part of at all? Or do you have information that we would need for this or?
Um, I have information from Lori that would be helpful, yep.
Okay, so I make a motion for the board to enter executive session under Title I, Section 313 of the Vermont Statute, Legal Consultation, 313, 17. Uh, can I get a second?
Thank your motion.
Okay, of, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And, uh, Bob, we request your presence. Okay, it is, uh, is everybody back?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is, uh, 2048 or 840, 49 now. Um, and we are um coming out of executive session. Um, and no action will be taken out of executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second on that motion?
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you all very much.